But on the other hand, I've never seen that refunded. Nothing else gets funded. I know. We have RTC. Oh, this Wednesday.
Okay, we're calling committee to hold together. Session and I anticipate we'll be taking a break about halfway through because we go in three hours without a break and coffee and water. The council, both King and I, at that time set no way would we ever consider going to two council meetings a month with work study sessions. And it's lingered on the table, on and off, and on and off, and on and off. And as council president, I'd like to get things off the table so that we're not getting old rumors. Somebody can start a rumor and get it all started up again and all heated up again and people get excited. So that was my reason for having this topic at this time is to have a discussion. I don't anticipate a report coming out tonight. We can have a good discussion on it, I hope. This subject has come up, it's been a hold, it's been a hold, off and on, and that's, and I just want to get it off. And people saying, oh, we're trying to sneak this meeting in, nobody knew about it. Well, in December, I committed the whole meeting when I was getting ready to take over. Randy Corman was gracious enough to give me a couple of minutes so that I could say that I wanted to bring this subject up. There was no intent, there was no discussion on it at that time. It was just to give notice to people that we were going to do it. Then on December ninth, we announced that we would have this meeting to discuss it. And then on top of that, there was an article in the Red Reporter that we're going to have it. So it's not like this is not a topic that people didn't know that was coming up. And the other big thing, I realize there's some words online. There was a memo, the email from the mayor to me, I mean, to the whole council. And somehow that thing, that email got distributed to everybody in the world about limiting audience comment at council meetings. And that has never been on the table at all. This council is, this particular council, since the last time we discussed it, has never said we were going to do it again. Bring that subject up. The mayor can send us any memo, email that he wants. But that doesn't mean that that's what we're going to discuss. And obviously, this, because I feel that way, it will not be discussed this evening. I have no intention of bringing it up while I'm council president. So I just, a lot of people have started a lot of rumors that just aren't true. They're making suppositions. And I want to be sure that those guidelines are set. So with that, I'll explain what I anticipate is reasoning for having two council meetings a month. First of all, there is some cost associated with it. I'm not overly concerned about the cost. I mean, I, as anybody knows, me, I'm very budget conscious. I don't want to spend money that we don't have or we could better use someplace else. There would be a savings if you want to look at it that way. However, what I'm proposing as a different way of doing this meetings would not save any money. Because my suggestion would, is that we go to two meetings, regular council meetings a month, that we would have those meetings on set days. And we would have to have them set ahead of time so they don't fall on a holiday. So you'd be sure of having two council meetings every, every month. If you go back through history of the past year, we had two council meetings in December, for instance, because just at the holidays and the fifth Monday came. So what I would propose that we come up with is we have positive meeting dates. So that we would meet two, two times a month as a council. And then in trying to listen to the people who are saying they don't get input, and there's been a lot of input saying there's no input until the council has made a decision because we worked through the committee. There are certain issues that the public is very much involved, would like to be involved in and have input into discussion phase. And I understand that. However, as much as I like to let people talk, we have rules that we have to go by. I, matter of fact, I felt that we could have taken comment at this meeting, but we can't. Because I just says, oh, we'll record it. But I've been advised that just recording it isn't enough. We have to then have somebody transcribe all of those minutes. So you're back into, you'd be really adding an extra council meeting to Jason's work today. So you can't, I mean, I thought that the, the recording would be just plenty enough. If somebody wanted to go listen to three hours of recording, they could come and ask for a disc and listen to it. And I was pointing out to you that I can't do that. So what I would propose is that on those issues where we have issues that a lot of people are interested in, and we obviously know, I mean, people say that no word was gotten out and you take a look around the room, this is more people than we get at a city council meeting. So the public did know, and there was no, in my opinion, there was notice, we didn't send it out to everybody, but it was announced at a public meeting. So what I would propose that we do on those issues that we want to discuss, and they're big major policy issues, that we allow public comment to be taken, which would mean that we'd have to have minutes subscribed and put out. I see that as a way that the public gets the more input than at an earlier stage in the game than they are getting now. So that's what I'm proposing, Terry.
So you're talking about it more in workshop format like we do here?
Yes.
Okay. And then allowing the public to talk at that time?
Yes.
Why wouldn't we do that in council chambers so it's just recorded?
Well, it still has to be transcribed.
But at least the people at home would be watching.
Well, if, if we'd, if that's what the council wants to do, and when we announce the meeting, they say, gee, can we have it in here? And we, and we do that fairly regularly. We do that now.
We didn't tonight, but Greg asked for it to be.
Well, let me clear that up. When I announced the meeting, nobody said anything about having it anywhere's, anywhere else. I, I've been sick, I didn't get all my emails, so I didn't get any emails until late, late in the week. By then it was too late to do anything. So it's, had it been brought up on the floor.
We've changed right before we've come in there before to move in there.
Well, I'm.
So you're saying it needed to be announced? We've changed in the past from here to here.
You have time to get the staff in, the staff doesn't come in.
To set up.
To set up at four o'clock. So that's, that's the reason for here.
Plus, there's a different staff in New York that's going to be recorded and shown on TV. So you'd have to, they'd have to be notified to show up.
And we have a whole bunch of other issues that I think are, well, they, you get a better discussion when we're around the table versus having somebody wait at that end and that end. And if we have staff presenting to us a lot of times, I personally feel that we're looking down on them and I'd rather be on an equal footing with them when they're presenting. So there's, there'd be times that it would be appropriate.
Council president.
Yes.
Let's just go back a minute. I was very concerned about not meeting in council chambers for this kind of conversation for obvious reasons. And to your surprise, people that are here are probably not here because of the outreach of the city did. The more outreach among community members that have high concerns about this topic, which as you can see is a broad spectrum of people throughout our community. And it is my understanding, Marcy mentioned, that it is our purview that we could change the location of this meeting in an appropriate way even after it had been announced. And the email that I did send out to you, and for the benefit of the public that is here, I'd like to just read it just so that they can understand what was said. I sent this out on the eighth, I believe, a couple of days after our council meeting, after giving it some thought upon learning from some of our community members their concern. But I sent this out to yourself, to Jay Covington, Dennis Law, to the full council, and our secretary, Julia. And the letter goes, dear President Person, I am requesting that we hold Monday's call meeting committee of the whole in the council chambers instead of the conferencing center. I have concerns about holding a meeting about frequency of council meetings, a very controversial topic, out of the public view by it not being televised. It has been my observation that whenever we hold meetings in the conferencing center, it eliminates the visibility of a public meeting for our residents who may want to see, hear, understand, and keep up to date about city business. At present, there is no option for our residents to even go online to access a transcript for the, for the record. Quote, for the record, by the way, is a software that we use to record these meetings. Should they be so inclined, if they even have access to a computer, it has been brought to my attention that there is a concern among many of our residents that this choice of venue and technology for public meetings does not reflect an earnest effort to demonstrate open government with transparency. Thank you in advance for your decision to demonstrate transparency in our meetings, especially during agenda topics that are controversial. And correct me if I'm wrong, but to date I haven't received a response either by email, verbal, or otherwise.
You haven't. Randy, you got it, don't you?
Well, yeah, I mean, I have a lot of thoughts about it. I think, you know, I'm not very, not very pleased, I'll just put it out there with the tone of where this discussion's going. I think, I want to say in fairness to Don, I do know that it was Don's intent to basically get in front of the staff with setting the agenda for the year. And among the various topics was this topic. But I do know that it was Don Person's intention, like it is when we look at our six-year transportation plan, and he goes, that's your plan, I want to come up with the council's plan. And then we reprioritize. And I know in this case, it was the staff was going to have their retreat and we were going to have our retreat. And Don said, no, we want to have a meeting first so that we can set the agenda. And I respect that and agree with that, frankly. And I think that the choice of venue kind of went with that. This was a predecessor to our, our council offsite, which is often at Merrill Gardens or something. So I suspect that's why this choice of venues was selected. I think if a council member had a concern about the location, and I've had concerns about that before. I think the point has to be made that, that there are videographers that are, that would have to be notified and we'd have to do some work to move the venue. In hindsight, with this many people, I tend to agree that it would have been good to have it in the other venue. But I also don't feel that, that we should make hay of the fact that Don didn't respond to an email. There's other ways to maybe make that happen beyond an email. But.
Excuse me, Mr. Corman, are you saying that as a fellow council member, that my request in writing about such an important matter didn't mirror the response from my council president?
I would, I would say that if something's very important to you, that a phone call to actually get a positive or negative response back would be in order. That, yeah, that, I mean, you send, you know, you send an email and you don't know. I mean, if, I don't know if Don wrote back and said no, or if he just didn't write back or didn't see the email.
I stated that there was no response at all, and he confirmed that, either verbal or.
Yeah, so if, I guess, I guess to that point, I would say, and this is general advice I'd give anybody, that if something is very important to you, do more than just sending an email.
Well, there's also an issue too of correspondence back and forth between council people. I mean, that's been, been done, getting any other council people involved and it creates a.
But, and we understand that, which would be in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. But there are other ways that that could have been done. Phone call, or even an email from the council president reminding everybody not to respond collectively in that email thread, but stating, you know, his position on how he felt that I liked dealing with the question. And neither, neither of those options were, and I don't want to make.
He's been sick too. So, you know, I don't check my emails from the city necessarily every day because I have to do it a different way than I do my other emails. So it's not, I'm not always on top of it.
About trying to pin somebody down for them not responding to an email, but.
Mr. Corman, this isn't about pinning anyone down. And let me just redress the tone. There is, there is no tone of this meeting that is directed in a negative direction. Clearly, what we're here to discuss is how are we going to create open access to our community members in terms of how we do business, how we involve them in making those decisions? And this is a big part of it. When we talk about having controversial meetings and, and formats and venues where it does not create that kind of open access. And clearly, again, you know, you can see that there's concern about that.
I can see that. And that's why something more than an email might have been a good idea.
So, so if I'm hearing you, you're saying that the onus would have been on me to do a better job of communicating that desire? As I understand it, I wasn't the only person who emailed, you know, the president. There are other emails from community members also. Is that correct? I believe I did see several community members who sent similar emails with concerns.
I don't, I don't know, but I want to reinforce that 15 years ago, I, I helped fund, actually, longer ago than that, I helped fund the cameras in the council chambers. I've been an advocate many times of moving meetings to the council chambers. And when I've done that, I've worked with the administration like the week in advance to get the meeting moved and make sure that, that there were videographers. And I don't want to get, I don't want to get sidelined on that point.
And I don't want to get sidelined either, but what I'm hearing you say is that, you know, the approach that I took in trying to get this meeting to be held in what the public may have desired to be a better venue was that, you know, somehow, you know, my efforts, you know, could have been expanded. And I think that's really at the heart of what we're sensing from some of our community members in terms of having people work so hard to get, you know, their points across, to get us to listen. It shouldn't be that difficult. The number of people that saw that email that I sent was pretty broad. And someone could have made some kind of effort to respond to it. And certainly, you know, there's a heightened sense of frustration in the community. It would warrant more attention than was given to a council member, certainly to our community members. So I don't want to keep, we got a lot to cover.
Okay.
Okay, so, but that's the point that I wanted to just make. Because in the future, you know, I would really like some kind of response.
Okay, and I'm just going to say, if something's really important to you in the future, maybe pick up the telephone. Maybe contact the mayor, maybe talk to Jay Covington. That's all. But honestly, I, I actually tend to agree with you on a lot of the other points. And I don't think we should get sidelined on trying to decide whether to beat up on Don because he didn't see anything or not.
No, we're not beating up on Don, it's not about that. As I mentioned earlier, it's not about that type of a toner of this conversation at all. But, but I also want to say that, you know, part of sending an email creates a public record. And so although I could have picked up the phone and made a phone call to it and so, and so forth, you know, when I send an email, you know, that, that creates an area of transparency that is documented and there's no question as to whether or not it was done or not done. And so, so, so that, that's just a part of, we should communicate as often as possible in my opinion.
I disagree with you, Greg. I will say this, and I think it was right to make a public record, have a public record of it. You still could have picked up the phone and called. I think that's where the issue is. If someone is sick and they're not accessing their email, you still could have picked, hey, did you get my email? And you either said, yes, I got your email, or no, I haven't gotten your email, I've been sick, I haven't looked at my email. You can say, hey, when you get a chance to, I sent the email, it'd be great if you could respond over email on what you wanted to. Instead of now, we're at a situation where we've spent 23 minutes talking about the email instead of talking about the issue at hand.
And council president, council member Prince, I would agree with that. But I would say that it works both ways. Wouldn't you, wouldn't you think? Wouldn't you think that if a person is sick, that at some point in time, they can create some kind of a way to communicate that they are sick, they're not sick, or they're better? In other words.
I don't know, I don't know if I agree with that, because if you're sick.
So it's a one-way thing? It's a one-way thing that.
If you're, if you're the requister and you're sending it to the person that you wanted to answer it, and they're not getting back to you, you call them, you pick up the phone. I do that all the time in my day job. If I send an email and I don't hear in a couple of days, I pick up the phone, hey, I need, really need an answer for you on this thing. Oh, I've been out of the office. Oh, I was sick. Okay, great. Can you give me a response? All right, done. But that's because I'm the one that's requesting the action to be taken. I'm not waiting on the person who is sick or out of the office or whatever to answer.
So I guess since we're establishing where we're going, from now on, pick up the phone. That's the way Don would prefer it to happen. Send the email, then pick up the phone.
That was a suggestion by other, other members.
Well, I'm just trying to clarify what, how he wants to be as council president. That's what the whole purpose of this.
Marcy, I've always answered your emails and anybody else's emails. And the one time that I don't, for a whole bunch of reasons, it's not going to set a policy and that's not what I'm, what I'm about. Everybody, everybody in the council knows that I most likely communicate as well, if not better than anybody else on issues and keeping people abreast of stuff. So I think we're beating a dead horse. Could I have done a better job? We can always do a better job. And yes, I could have done a better job. For whatever reason, and I got out of bed at 2:30, 3 o'clock this afternoon to come down here so most likely they don't want to be too close to me. Living fighting this flu or whatever it is. And I've gone out for a couple of things and then gone home. And one of the first things I do is I don't go down to my basement and then check all my emails. So if I'm remiss in that, then I, then I am remiss. Greg, I've always answered your emails. It's most likely the first time that I didn't. Had I answered you, I would have said, no, I want to keep it in the conference room for, for the same reason that I expressed, that I think we get a better discussion, an open discussion than we do on the floor. This is, this is going to be hashed over and over and over again, I'm assuming, on the council floor. Because that's just the nature of the beast. So with that, I think we passed it over for almost a half hour. And let's start talking about whether, whether we want to even consider it.
And I would just like to just add this, that I'm happy that you're healthy and to be here tonight. And I have no knowledge that you were sick. And had I known that from some form of communication, then I probably would have viewed this a lot differently. So the news that you've been sick is news to me tonight. But I'm happy that you're feeling good enough to be here tonight for this meeting.
I really don't feel that good that I'm here.
You get me sick and send me to the.
Okay, so, I mean, I, I've expressed my views on going to the twice a month.
I'd say I have a question about that.
Sure.
So we got the email from Ewan, the memo from Ewan that laid out all the staff costs. And I know that's not a consideration, at least for you. My question is, so if we go to council meetings, to committee of the whole, isn't that still basically the same amount of staff cost? Does something change there? I mean, I'm just curious for myself. I don't see Ewan, I thought it's.
But I think, I can answer that for you. The staff cost is basically the videographers, which at some selected meetings that we're having, the topics that are going to be really of interest to the whole community, we would have, we'd do that. And Jason's time to, I think Jason, you're the one that does the minutes, aren't you? And those are staff costs that are ongoing. I understand that they're not being paid overtime. There's other staff that do come to sit in for a few minutes. And that we do end up paying overtime too. So there is, there is some extra cost. And that's what I said, started the conversation out with. I'm not looking at this as a cost-saving measure. So, so to me, it's not the cost, because its cost is going to be about the same. And staff, because a lot of staff, I mean, Ewan's here, and we don't pay her overtime. Kristi doesn't get paid overtime, the city attorney doesn't, Jay, we just work him all we want. But, so that, that's the cost. If we were going to do it for just the cost, I wouldn't, we wouldn't even be having this discussion.
So Don, I guess I got a question to that. I guess, I guess the first place that I would want to start is, you know, what's not working? What's not working in terms of how we are operating today that, that the calls for, the need for us to consider these changes?
Well, I think, I think I expressed that before. Is, is it, there's certain people in this room and people that have expressed that they don't get a chance to, at the committee of the whole or that, get a chance to have audience input. And they want to have audience input in our work sessions earlier rather than later. This, this system allows on those occasions where there's a lot of interest that we would have input after work session as we were making the decision, not when the report came out. So I think this is more in a response to what a lot of the people in this room have, have said they want it. They want, they want to be able to have some input early on in the process. And at the committee of the whole, on a lot of these issues, that's the first time the council has seen them. We haven't discussed these issues at the council meeting. The first, first time up on a lot of the big issues is we get some kind of presentation at committee of the whole and then we start a discussion in the committee of the whole. And that's, then we do a committee of the whole report and then it comes out.
So what you're actually saying is this allows the public to get their comments in much earlier than when it comes to committee of the whole. They'll, when it's, it'll still be a committee format and they'll be able to ask questions and, and will respond, is what you're saying. It'll allow for a conversation that, that they complain that they don't get when we have regular council meetings.
Right.
Well, why don't we just change the policy so that they, if we're going to change the policy.
It's a bad reason.
Yeah, why, why don't we just allow audience comment whether it's in here or in there at every.
But we're still talking two different things. I mean, the, yes, because the council meeting is dealing with issues much later in the process.
I'm saying, why not change our policy so that people can, the public can comment during committee of the whole?
I understand that, I understand that. But when it's in committee of the whole, we're making the decision, yes, it's going to happen or no, it's not going to happen. What he's saying is he's moving it so that the public knows about it weeks or months before it comes to, to council.
And, and the other part about.
You don't see the difference?
No.
If you want to limit, if you really want to limit it, then we can continue on doing what we're doing. Because we historically give an hour, have an hour committee of the whole meeting. And what happens in, in the committee of the whole meetings historically is we never get through the whole topic. And then if you're going to add a lot, a public comment, now you're talking about two and three hours of.
Whole campaign.
But then, whoa, but then now you're talking about, you're talking about just what you don't like. You're saying you don't want them at four o'clock in the afternoon, you want them at seven o'clock.
It's fine, okay. I come at three. I just, I just have to clarify, Marcy, you must understand that, that when a topic is going to come to this, to the committee like he's saying, it's going to happen earlier in the process where what the comments the public has actually has an opportunity to change it.
I don't see that.
Why?
Why would we announce it any earlier than we already do?
Because it would be a, that's what he's suggesting, that now it would be a committee of the whole topic. Things would come on earlier, especially.
Then let's just do that, the way it is now.
But how, then how would we, if it comes, if it comes at a council meeting?
No.
When it, when they can talk, it's much further in the process, obviously.
I, I kind of get what you're saying, Marcy, I think I do. I will say as one of the working steps in the room, I had to shift things around in my schedule to make sure I was here at four o'clock.
Yeah.
So trying to do a. So trying to do a committee of the whole every week at four o'clock for me. But I think the point Don's making, and I've said publicly several times, I see both sides of this issue. Is that we can take a deeper dive into issues if we haven't expanded committee of the whole to talk about things. Because quite often what happens is, we get going on a topic. I think when the fire chief was in here talking, since we got going on a topic, we were up against the time, we had to wrap it up, we had to limit our questions, and then we had to go into the chambers and get ready for the council meeting. I think that's what you're saying, you're trying, you're trying to allow us to have more time to go in depth on issues.
Right.
So going back to Marcy's question, and if Marcy's kind of confused about it, I'm sure some other people in the room have to be. In terms of understanding whether or not we're talking about work session as opposed to a, a call meeting? Because, you know, a call meetings were, you know, were there to take action. Whereas in a work session, there can be no action taken. But we can deliberate, we can discuss, we can hear that. Are you speaking about having the public's engagement in a work session environment? Can you be clear on that?
Well, basically, right now, we technically don't make a decision. The decision isn't made, we make a recommendation, and then the report is then taken care of on the council floor. That's the first time, because we don't vote on it. But it's, it's kind of semantics. It's, but it's work, a work session where you would get this. I mean, it's interesting, I mean, it's so important that, A, the council, as well as public, but more important than the, the council, fully gets a chance to sit and talk and vet the issue before we make a decision and take, get that input. And I, I like to say, I'm not, this is not something that I'm going to fall on my sword on. I mean, if you, if you're so satisfied with what we're doing, and three other council people are, then, then we're wasting our time talking about it.
Can I offer this? I, I, I really do like the spirit of, that it's been expressed in terms of what is motivating, you know, the change. That there is a desire to create more opportunity for discourse from our community members. I, I think that's valuable, I think that's what we should be doing. I just think that the way that we're thinking about doing it may not be the most productive way, the best way to do it. I think that we, and I recall that meeting where we had members from the community who, you know, put the question, I believe it might have been from Mr., who asked a question, how do I get to know about information before it gets here? Very good question. And then, so I think what we need to analyze and think about is how can we provide that kind of, you know, engagement early on, but in a way that's very transparent, in a way that it doesn't just speak to the audience who are at the meeting, but we've got residents at home who may never come to city hall and may, may never have, but they watch meetings. I, I speak to these people. And they learn a lot, they know a lot, a lot about what's going on because of what they see on our televised, recorded meetings. So I think that's probably something that we need to try to talk about. How do we do that? How, I'm all for, and you know, when I think about, you know, the first question I ask is, why are we thinking about this? Because, you know, our population has doubled, you know, in the past decade, you know, we're, you know, we're rapidly becoming one of the largest cities in the state. We're more diverse than we ever had been before. The issues that are impacting our city are emerging. I personally don't think that our policies are in step with the emerging issues that we have as it relates to a host of things regarding poverty, homelessness, minimum wage at 15 bucks an hour, paid sick leave, and the list can go on and on. So we need to be having more discourse, more conversation. And I think that oftentimes, the best ideas are not just going to come from the people that are sitting here at this table. I know I don't have many of the ideas that I get, I learn from other people. So I'm, I'm, I'm there with you. You know, if the goal here is to try to figure out a way, we can create the kind of engagement that provides more transparency, more involvement, more ideas that can be brought to us from our community members. Let's go, let's do it, let's figure something out. But let's put other options on the table and not just, you know, the reduction of, you know, a frequency of meetings.
Mr. President? Yeah, well, that's, I appreciate that. This is actually a conversation that I was supportive of having. I, I'm actually very much in alignment with Mr. Taylor on this point. That, that I also agree that we could get the, the citizens involved in our conversations much earlier. And, and if you say, what, what's not working about the last few years? I could get started, but I don't want to reopen all those old wounds. You know, we've had, we've had a lot of issues that have progressed to a point where they've become highly controversial before the public even really gets involved. And, and I think the point here is to do exactly like you're saying, to have, to have some committee of the whole meetings that, that last two or three hours where we take up issues very early, you know, right when they're first appearing. And the sacrifice is that we may not have a regular council meeting, I mean, the way that was proposed that night. We may not approve vouchers, we may not give Linden LaRouche supporters and Stand Up America an opportunity to come down and say their thing. But instead, we'll dedicate that time to talking about the downtown revitalization or, you know, something else that's important to the citizens before we get a master plan all saucered and blown and ready for us to pass in ordinance, only to hear that they don't like it. And so that was my point. That's, that's what I'd be interested in at least exploring. I, you know, I, I don't, I don't have strong feelings. I'd like to know that if we, if we did have, you know, those, those sessions that weren't council meetings, that we'd make good use of them. But has, has been mentioned, we're, we have some constraints. Anytime the public speaks at our meetings, there's supposed to be notes taken. And that does cost us money. I, I like the idea, I actually, in spite of my comments about the email, I actually do favor as much as possible being on the camera when we think that there's, you know, a half dozen people or more may be interested in the topic. That does cost us money too, the videographers. We may have them on salary, I can't remember, but certainly if we boost the number of meetings they're expected to cover, there's going to be more cost. But again, that's, that's worthwhile if it's for the right thing. I, I do, I do have to say, and I think those, I think many members of the public will understand this, that when we got into the summertime and we were coming and, you know, the comments we were getting were from people that weren't in Renton talking about spurious things, talking about how we were the only forum that they had left to come speak at. And I was thinking about how we were paying to keep the lights on, we were paying to have our staff there, we were paying to have a video record of somebody that didn't live in Renton complaining about another body somewhere else. I thought, if this were my money, I wouldn't want to pay for this. And that's pretty much how I look at the taxpayers' money. On the other hand, if it's about our downtown, if it's about one of our community plans, if it's about any other legitimate, you know, city interest, I, I want to make sure that the public has a chance for engagement. And I really do believe that we, we, we get into controversies because we're not offering people the opportunity to say their, their piece at the right time in the process. And anything we can do to fix that, I'm in favor of. Like Mr. Prince, I can't, you know, I started at six o'clock this morning. So it's, it is going to be a long day as it is. And I can't start a committee of the whole meeting every day at four o'clock and then progress all the way until after a council meeting. But, but anyways, I, I really would like to make sure the public's engaged early, they have the chance to speak, and that we just pick the best meeting rhythm that accomplishes that.
Greg, you did that.
Yeah, and, and you know, I, I guess, you know, the thing that, a couple of points I just want to make is that, you know, we're not unique as a municipality in terms of, you know, how well we communicate with our residents. I can say that our channels, you know, are pretty traditional. Look at, you know, the different municipalities in terms of how they communicate with their residents. Emails, utility bills, you know, TV, website, those kinds of things. We have to figure out how to become more dynamic. And, and, and part of that certainly means that we don't take away probably one of the easier ways for people to stay plugged in with the TV. You know, people see the meetings looped over and over again. And when they see various conversations and meetings are taking place, that provides a lot of information. I would also say this, that, you know, just because other cities have made that choice doesn't mean that we do. And we, we taught ourselves as being ahead of the curve. And part of that means that we've got to be more innovative in terms of how we do things. Now, you know, you look at a city like Seattle, they're not reducing needs, you know, but they're six times larger than we are. Certainly a lot more progressive in terms of some of the things they're doing there. We can learn some things from them. So I don't, I don't, I don't think that the solution is going to come in reducing the television visibility in terms of actual engagement and interaction. I think that's a powerful thing. And, you know, I heard a phrase years ago that goes, where there's a clean stall, there is no oxen. So sometimes things will get a little messy. That's kind of how we build stuff and how we do things. And that's okay. It doesn't have to be nice, clean and, you know, proper all the time. Sometimes there'll be a little mess, but that's how we get things done. So we get a few people like the LaRouche folks or other people that come in periodically that cause a stink. I don't think that we should be thinking about coming up with policies that are going to limit our residents, make them pay for those types of individuals.
So I think my point, my question to you, is we've talked about doing a lot of stuff in here. But I think you also said if there was a topic that was hot, we would move it to the chambers.
Right.
Would, would it be more beneficial, and I'm asking you, Greg, if we just said all of our committee of the whole meetings are going to be in chambers?
I think they should.
I mean, is that what you're saying? I'm asking because I need to.
Yes, 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 I'll say, I'll, here's the answer to the question, and thank you for asking me. I would say yes, they should be. Because currently, when we hold our committee, committee of the whole meetings here, which are open to the public, there are no transcripts, there's.
They are recorded.
Well, they're recorded, but they're recorded with a technology that was challenging for me to figure out after being on the council for several years. But once I did.
They're video online.
No, this, no, no, not.
They're video the whole.
Not when they're done here.
Not in this.
That's what I'm referring to, when they're done here. To answer Ed's question about should they all be done in there, I would say yes. That would be most transparent because, you know, we want, you know, our residents to hear how we think, how we arrive at the decisions and the life. They want to know, you know, they don't want to believe that we have certain conversations here that we won't hold out there on the, in the public view. So I think that they should all be there first and foremost.
So I agree with you. The only difference I have is, I don't see this as not being transparent with the mics here and the reporting and it being open to the public. If we were locking the doors and drawing the shades, that to me would not be transparent.
Let me clarify. I said most transparent, and what that means is that, right now, as we have this room full of all of these community members here, no one at home can see this. I would wage that many people don't know how to get access to this information, this meeting. So it is not most transparent. It has a form of transparency, but it, it could be done better. And if it was in the council chambers, we would have people who'd be very interested in seeing this array of, of community members who decided to join us tonight for this topic.
I was just going to throw out the, the comment that, then one of the things that we get complaints about is that they don't know about it. So although we might have those meetings, we may not have more attendance unless, you know, they're diligent in looking at what our topic is going to be for the next committee of the whole meeting or the next workshop. I mean, there's, there still has to be something that, that the public has to do, you know, if they want to come to the meetings. I mean, we have a long time here for this to get all the people to come. So, you know, so that's a problem that area too that we have.
Yes, it is, it is a challenge, but I look at it differently. Rather than putting the onus on our community members and requiring them to be more diligent, I would look at it as if, you know, I'm a business person, I'm trying to get more customers. And what do I need to do? What, what do I need to do to create more opportunity for them to want my widget? That's the way I view it. And so that means becoming more innovative, more dynamic and more creative in the channels that we choose to use and where we use them and how often we use them, which means that we can create more engagement.
It's online, it's in the paper, it's, you know, and we'd all, obviously, you know.
Everybody doesn't view the same channels.
Yeah, so it's the TV. Right, oh, okay.
Of communication.
Right, so, you know, obviously, it's, it's always going to be a challenge on how we can.
But that's our job.
Yeah. Also, but I think there's also a responsibility for them that if they're interested in it, you know, they either need to subscribe to the information or, I mean, that's possible.
What about people that speak different languages? What about people who are new to our societies, who've come from places? Who've come from places where they didn't trust their government? We're a very diverse community.
I, I certainly understand.
Your point is well taken, but I'm simply saying, Terry, that, you know, mainstream folk understand everything that you're saying. But there's a population of people in our community that they travel through different, different ways.
So how would you propose to get that information to a weekly?
Well, these are the conversations that we're supposed to be having so that we can find solutions to those kind of challenges.
All right, it's really a different topic than this, than what we're talking about tonight, that's.
So does that mean we wouldn't have committees anymore?
No, we'd stay with the committees.
I'd just have mine during council then.
Why, I don't, I don't understand. I, I really just don't understand. To me, this is, this is giving the public a lot more opportunity to comment and be involved. And obviously, some of the things that we work on at the committee would have little interest to the council, at least in some of the committees that I work on, you know, because they're small topics that aren't ready to be out in, in a big public forum yet.
Everyone's interested in the council, Terry.
I, yeah, the council, yes. So, you know, I just, so to me, it, it appears that if it was done regularly and done in chambers, we're giving a lot more opportunity to the public to hear what's going on earlier and to be able to talk about it. So to me, it's much better than what we're doing now if, if our goal is to be more transparent and allow people to talk at an earlier stage on a topic.
I disagree. I, I would agree that we should be having a conversation about other options besides the one that's being proposed. If that really is our goal, if we really want to create more access, more open dialogue early on for our community members, then why do we only have the one option on the table? Why not have more than one option on the table?
The one Don is suggesting doesn't mean that there can't be other options. It's the one he's, topic that he brought up.
Yeah, I might not understand what you're saying, more than we have on the agenda or?
Well, well, if we're going to be having this conversation about, well, we, we, we navigated to the genesis of the purpose of this item on the agenda, which is that its sole purpose is to create more engagement for our community members. I'm simply saying that if that's, that's really what we want to do, then why, why not have more options to choose from? Because clearly, there's a visual demonstration that people aren't happy about what we're talking about. So why not talk about some other options?
I would, I would, I would, I agree with you, but I'd also add more time for us to be able to explore options, I, issues deeper. You know, if we have a three-hour committee of the whole meeting, we're able to discuss things in far more length than we are when we have an hour committee of the whole meeting and we've spent 45 minutes talking about something, answering questions. And then it's like, oh, gosh, we've got to go get ready, go to council. So I would add that to your.
So if I'm.
I'm not disagreeing.
Oh, no, no, no. If I'm hearing you. Yeah, and I like that. And, and I think that that's worth talking about. I would love for us to walk away from here today because of course there's no action, as you've stated, Don, to be taken. But I would love for us to walk away, you know, with the, you know, the, the idea that, you know, we, we, and I, I like that idea, that we want to figure out how to create more engagement from a community that is becoming more and more conscious and wanting to become more and more involved.
Whatever, and I'm, I'm willing to take a look at any of them. However, we, we still come down to the bottom, there's several issues that as we do this, is that you limit the number of people, the people and their positions who can run for council if, if you're going to start something that goes for three hours. Like Ed and Randy have said, this is weird to do this every week or every other week. It'd be fall in a. it'd be fall in a.
The board's going to run it.
Get them in trouble with their day job because it's hard for them to get away. So you'd be starting, having to start at six or seven o'clock at night and go for longer periods of time. And it, it does change the dynamic, so I'm just throwing that out. And secondly, it is, the council, it is our responsibility to take, get input. And I'm all for taking all the input, but then it's our responsibility as elected officials to make a decision based upon what is the best information that we've had. And not because we've had 10 people who heck can get off and come in and talk to us, but it.
And I also think starting something at four limits the amount of public we're going to get, because other people have jobs as well and they can't, you know, then we're creating, I mean, for me, perfect world for me, if we were going to do this, would be start at six or something and go till we were done.
Right.
In that way, we've given the public chance to get off from work, we've given council members a chance to get off from work, and we can come in and have a discussion.
Yeah. If I may, I, I think when we publish an agenda, the natural response by people reading the agenda, I used to do the same thing before I was on council, I do it now, is to go, okay, so these are the topics that are on council tonight. And those are the ones that, you know, if you take out the Lindon, LaRouche and Stand in America supporters, those are the ones people are going to speak to. Unfortunately, those are the ones that are at the ordinance stage, where the ordinance has been written and we're about ready to pass it.
Right.
And so somebody who doesn't like it is set up for heartbreak and controversy as they come down and, and speak to it and we just kind of go, ooh, we wish we'd heard from you before. And so I was hoping we might have a way that we, you know, are ready to take that comment right when we're first talking about something. And frankly, our existing committee of the whole meetings, usually I don't even feel like I can ask my questions, or frequently, I'll say. We'll get a staff report, this is what's going on, this is all the things we've done, and look at the time, we, we need to break now. And so, you know, we'll have to ask a couple of quick questions. So that's where we, we kind of need more time, but we never can get it right before our seven o'clock meeting without kind of just running into trouble. Now, I think we, we probably could keep, keep the, the four council meetings a month and find some ways to work that in, and I'm open about that. But that's why I, that's why I was open minded about this, just the idea of getting forums where we looked at stuff earlier, before the ordinances had all been drafted by the attorney, where people felt natural coming in and speaking to it early on. And, and I frankly, I think maybe it's a good idea about putting committee of the whole always in the chambers. I, yeah, I, I don't, I don't really have any objections. I, I mean, I'll, I'll say, I, I know the history. I mean, when, I think when I first started on council, maybe the video was just beginning. We had a cruder video system at the other, at the other city hall that had been kind of scapped in, and then we put it one here that was quite a bit better. I think that there was a feeling that we lose a little bit when we're not sitting around a table, but actually, like Mr. Taylor, I've always thought that the opportunities for the public to, to keep up with us are, are great. Some of our meetings are probably so dull that they probably wouldn't care, but for one like this, obviously, people would care.
Yes, that's good. And, and, and I would like to add one other observation and thought, in that people typically will gravitate to their points of interest. And so everybody's not going to be interested in vouchers, everyone's not going to be interested in planning or developing utilities or whatever it is, but they're going to find something. And it's our job to try to keep those avenues open for them to do that. But one of the things that, you know, I'm just going to say is that one of the channels that can be very effectively utilized, and when I say channel, that's a metaphor of how we communicate, you know, information in a variety of different ways, yeah. We're looking at it right now, with various community of, of people that are here tonight, community leaders, because many of these individuals, you know, have bodies of, of people that they have influence with. And so the more access we provide for people, whether we agree with, you know, their points of views or not, you know, these are individuals that can communicate through their blogs, through their, you know, their spheres of influence, they can get information out there for us, and that can help us. It can help us to get early notice to different people about things that we're talking about that we're working on. And so I, I throw that out there in the spirit of, you know, looking at, you know, our community members who choose to come to the dais, you know, excuse me, to the podium to, to speak to an audience, comment periods, that we, we treat them with respect, you know, not that we don't, but we look at them and we understand that, you know, you know, they elected us, they pay taxes, you know, they're taking off time from their, you know, busy lives and so forth. And then we need to, we need to partner with them in a very cohesive way. They're, they're not apocets, you know, these are people that passionately care about the community, and they demonstrate it. They, they demonstrate it. And so, you know, and we can utilize that capital in a way that can really help us to promote engagement in a very effective and positive way. And really, you know, that, that, that supports the council meetings being televised, excuse me, the committee of the whole meetings being televised and creating the kind of, you know, opportunities where people can speak, you know, and let us know. And, and, and that transcends into the homes. When they're televised, people can see that. And we can, we can really change the feel of, you know, things, I believe, if we moved in that direction in an honest way.
Excuse me. Any other comments? I, like I said, we weren't going to make a decision today, so I think we've all had a lot to think about, so.
I think it's important to remember how we got here, and that was the people elected us and who we serve. And I haven't had any feedback from people saying, yeah, that's a great idea. We have a room full of people that say, you serve us and we don't think that's a good idea.
Well, you see, I have, I've had just the opposite feedback. There's a lot of people that are, are, are happy with what we're doing.
Well, and I don't.
And, and the feedback that I've gotten from the people, some of the people in the room, they, they want the early involvement, and that's what this was about.
Yeah, I didn't understand that.
So now you're saying, Marcy, you just soon go back to what we're doing because you don't see any difference in it.
That's not what I'm saying. I totally agree with getting early notice out and looking at other ways that we can engage them. The public doesn't see a problem really with the way we've been doing it. If we can enhance that to give them more opportunity and earlier information, I don't know why we couldn't do that. Why is it an either or?
Well, it isn't an either or. That's why we're having this discussion tonight. I mean, if, you know, it's an either or, we tried, one or other of us would have tried to have four votes and say, let's push it through, and that's not, not supposed to happen.
Jay? Just a, I think, one of the comments, I might have just been looking at this schedule and working with other cities, one of the reasons why you don't see both a, a large amount of committee work and a significant number of committee of the whole meetings is, and having them every week along with a council meeting, is, is you get into the issue, just the physics, you either have to start early every week or you have to stay late. And, and at either end of that, you do impact the public. If you could start, it's made, you've got working council members and working public, so if you have started a committee of the whole meeting at four o'clock, you're going to have committee meetings that are going to start before then, you're, you're limiting public access and in some cases, council access. If you start it all later, you're then into nine, 10, 11, maybe midnight, you limit public availability at the later end too. So I think a lot of cities were just trying to figure out how they could do that, and, which is why I think on the table you see, some cities have said, we're just going to go to committee of the whole, and others have said, we'll keep it at the committee level. But most have said, one way to do that is to try to, to schedule council meetings on alternative weeks so that then during the week, it's a question of, you've only got so many hours in the day, and you've got so many things you want to try to do, and if you try to do those every, every week, you run out of clock.
Another observation that I have, and I think it was stated somewhere, that over the, you know, time, and I, I followed council meetings before I was elected, and I remember, you know, seeing two plus hour council meetings, you know, that, and, and that wasn't, that, that wasn't an unusual thing. And I think that what we have morphed into under, you know, you know, this administration is some of the shorter council meetings than we've had. I think we're averaging maybe around an hour, you know, for our council meetings, which means that we're pretty efficient in terms of how we are doing things right now. So I'm not one for wanting to, you know, impose on anyone to, you know, come early and stay late or anything like that, but I do think that, you know, we want to just make sure that we're looking in terms of, you know, putting in whatever time needs to be put in to make sure we get the job done, that that's the focus, that we don't just say, you know, we just have so many hours, you know, because, you know, I think we can figure out how to efficiently solve this problem also without shortchanging our community in terms of, you know, how many times they get the, you know, bringing information to us in a council meeting or any other meeting.
So this is, this is what I've taken out of this so far, that the general consensus of the council is to hold all committee of the whole out in the chambers.
Yes.
That's very simple, we can do that. And then the other part is, is that you, you want some more ideas on how to better involve the, the community earlier on. And I think that's a general consensus, and how, how do we do that? So I would task all of you to give me and Ed some suggestions, and then we can come back and discuss this at a later date. Because that's what this was all about, whether you want to believe it or don't believe it, it was about trying to get more input from the public at an earlier time. So with that, we'll just close this discussion and move on, because we've gone on it for an hour and five minutes, and I don't think we're going to get any harder than that, to be.
Alright.
Okay. This, this, this could be an interesting one. Just to reiterate that we're, this is a process that we're using on emails. A lot of times, council, we get a council all email on, on the subject, and we have no idea if it, if it's gone to the mayor's office and us both. That's very frustrating to me because, you know, the mayor can answer it and we can answer it, but all of a sudden, we have, you know.
Eight people answer.
Eight people making an act, taking action on something. Or we have eight people saying, that guy's going to do it, she's going to do it, I'm going to do it. So I just want to reiterate if, if it's, what, what our policy has been is if you're the chair, if it's transportation issue, then Marcy would, Marcy, Marcy would answer it, you know, if it's public safety, Randy would answer it. And, and then Jay, I would hope there would be some way that we, as a council, could know if the mayor's office has got it, because it just seems, not that we don't want to answer it, but a lot of times, our answer to it is, is well, we're going to refer this to the administration. And the administration's already answered it because they got the email the week before we did, and we have no, we have no idea. And I, I don't, I mean, obviously, we, I'm not going to get the mayor's email.
Yeah, we'll work on that. I think sometimes, sometimes when they're, when the email is, has a CC, they know, it's the ones that sometimes you get and we get where it's, looks like it's just to us.
Right.
And it turns out it's the 40 of us.
Yeah.
So I think the council liaison and Julie and I will try to work on that, come up with some ideas. We, we do try usually when it's a, when it's a topical, it's, it's much easier if it comes to you, because Julia generally lets us know that, hey, by the way, the council got this, and we can check out at mayor's staff and say, did anybody else get this? But we'll work on ways to, to figure out a way to inform you that we received this. And what I'm hearing is hopefully before we reply, so that you know, in case you're all working on it or whatever. It's, I would, you know, it's probably, I don't know if it's the majority of the time, we do have enough indication that it's gone to you as well as to us that we can work on that, but there are those times when it's hard to tell. So we'll, I think we can kind of work on something in the clerk's office, council liaison, mayor's office, we'll see if we can figure out a way to do that.
Well, there are the times when we respond and the mayor's office had it a week before we did and it's already, already solved the problem, and it makes it look like we really don't know what's going on, and actually, we don't know what's going on. I mean, that's.
I usually will ask Julia, somebody else has gotten it, you know, before I answer, just, just to make sure that we're not doubling up.
Okay, that's like.
I have, we got one today, I think, and I wasn't sure whether it was a transportation or public safety, it had to do with the Cascade School. So do I answer that as transportation or wait for Randy as public safety?
It sounded transportation to me, but.
But we were briefed in public safety about it. So.
I thought public safety when I read that email.
Ah, okay.
I mean, you know, six doesn't have to be the other.
Well, I guess in the, in those cases, maybe an email to Randy or whoever is, you going to answer this or am I going to answer it, or a phone call would, would, would make it, or?
Yeah.
Because I think it's important, I usually sit on them, if I, if I don't see anybody has responded, even if it is not my committee, and especially as the president of the council, if I see that somebody hasn't responded to that email within a day or two, then I will respond. But I want to be sure that the committee chair always has, has the first shot at answering it. And, and in fairness to everybody, it's, it's just like, yours is a good example, you're kind of like, well, should I or should I not? And, and then in that waiting back and forth, sometimes the people don't get a response.
How about this, is like, I mean, Julie's pretty good at getting a sense, and she helps out in that way, you know, in terms of, she's been around as long enough to kind of get the sense of what individual would be most appropriate for responding to some of those, and she sees our emails. So I mean, could she, I mean, she'd get an email, she'd get a copy of it because you're included in the, the council.
I do, if it goes to the full council.
Right.
But if you get them individually, I'm, I don't.
Right. So, so in that case, she could assist in that. And in those other cases where, you know, it's more nebulous, then maybe, you know, a question could be fluid, you know, to the extent, you know, should I answer this?
Marcy's pretty good, several of them, I know, Marcy's pretty good about, if she gets it and it's not real clear that we've got it, she'll usually always forward it. Several of you do that too, saying, I've received this, I'm forwarding this to staff. And that gives us a heads up too, if we, if we're not sure that you've got it, then we can respond back saying, we also got this, we'll go on and reply.
That one we're going to leave to you because as I'm thinking back, that there were some requests for additional police enforcement. That's what stopped me from answering it, because it sounded like it should go.
Almost.
From Clark Wilcox.
Yeah, to the administration.
But. So what I usually do is I'll say, thank you for your concerns, notice I've copied administration above, and we'll wait for their input and further info. So.
That's a good, good solution.
Yeah, not try to come up with my own when it's something like that.
Especially when we might not know all the detail.
Yeah.
You know, you're just seeing.
And I, I thought the suggestions were great, frankly, for right away to do something, but.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm going to leave that one with you. I don't know if you've had time to see that.
We're going through some of this faster than I thought. And the next one I have is topics for committee of the whole, of what topics that you're interested in having, because sometimes we just have topics to have topics, and I, I would rather have topics that you're really interested in and that we can have, have a good discussion on them versus just listening to the, to somebody, so.
I'll kick it off. I think I'd like for us to get on the topic of community benefit agreements. Community benefit agreements, which for those that may not know our, agreements that we. Community benefit agreements, which for those that may not know our, agreements that we can negotiate with developers who choose to want to do business here in Renton, maybe build a big box, whatever, and get buy-in from them to provide some form of community benefit. And those are being done all over the country, they could be very significant in terms of creating resource, amenities, or different types for us. So that's one of the things I like to talk about. The other thing I think that would be good for us to, to talk about with our neighboring city to the north, Seattle, they're doing some very progressive things around paid sick leave. We should have those conversations, I think.
Paid sick leave.
Paid sick leave ordinances, yes. We should breach those conversations, I think we should be talking about.
Can you talk, I'm sorry, to the general public or to our staff?
We should be talking about, we should be learning about that, we should be thinking about.
She's asking, do you mean?
I want you to define the topic a little bit more. Are you talking about within our city employees, or are you talking about within the city?
Within the city, yes.
Okay.
Yes, paid sick leave ordinances among, you know, here in our city, similar to what Seattle's doing. Some of the other topics I think we should be breaching also is, you know, the conversation about fifteen dollars, you know, an hour minimum wage. We should be talking about that as well. Just a few, Ms. Rogers.
I think we should get the downtown back on our plate. We owe it to the downtown persons as well as our whole community to work on this.
You know, one of the things that we used to get frequent updates from WashDOT about the freeways, and I know you guys are on those committees and you give us some reports, but we really, I'd like a little bit more in depth, I think, about where we really are and what we might be able to expect, you know, in the next few years, or where that might, where that might really be.
That's a good idea, too.
I, I think I would also add, since we're at the start of the legislative session, I guess semi-regularly, regular legislative updates.
We can.
We get them, we get them usually at the beginning and at the end, I'm saying, for a short session, we have a six-day session, you know. Every couple of weeks, because things change, every couple of weeks is, is not enough, but, you know, things change so quickly. And, you know, the lack thereof or potential of a transportation package is going to be something that's going to be very important to Renton.
You know, I, I would, that's most likely something that we could do at each council meeting.
Yeah, question, we, we try to provide a weekly written update, so this would be in addition to that, just an opportunity for you to discuss.
And to ask questions.
And to ask questions, okay.
Because I do give the weekly updates, but I meant, because I may have a question and Marcy may have a same question. And makes no sense for both of us to send the email and you have to answer the same question, but, yeah.
How about you get, again, it goes with it.
I'm just tallying up that bill, I'm seeing the figures, I'm telling.
Uh, anyway, it, it gets the public to know what's going on as well, because we'll do it, we do it if we do it at the council.
So is that a committee of the whole or a council?
I think we should do it at the council meeting, you know, just like your administrative, that's a good part of your administrative report. And then we could ask questions if you had questions, and Ed, because Ed's down in Olympia so much, he sometimes adds more of an insight that he could add to it. Because, I can tell you, I, nobody is anticipating any transportation package out of, out of Olympia this year. Just is not going to happen, the, the general consensus.
Election year.
Election is, the big article on the Supreme Court saying that you got to fund schools, which, let me tell you, you want to talk about, that's most, that and mental health is the most important two things that we can do to help our communities is to take care of the mental health problem and our education problem. But that is a giant ganny, a dollar amount. And then the day before and the day after, they have the cost overruns on.
By twenty and the first.
And the tunnel, and people are taking a look at it and saying.
Why wouldn't we give you any more?
Why wouldn't we give more, and that's going to, that'll segue us in a minute into what I'm going to ask Ed to talk on.
I've got some.
Okay.
The airport, and specifically the next generation navigation, that RAC is recommending the city move forward with FAA on. It's new, but I want you all to be comfortable with that, because most of you, many of you were here, two thousand six and two thousand seven, when we had such an uproar and ended up going to Mercer Island. It was a unanimous decision at RAC, which is remarkable from where we've been, including Mike Stero, who sat next to me, remember, he's our Mercer Island representative? And I specifically turned to him and I said, you understand this is good for Mercer Island, right? And he said, yes. And I said, and you will go to bat for us, right? And he said, yes. But it was just, to, to come out of that unanimous, now I want you to all be comfortable with why that is a good thing, when people in Kennydale and Talbot Hill, potentially downtown say, is this going to put more noise, is it going to change, is it going to bring in more? It, it really reduces the noise.
Can I ask a question? So, did that start in RAC? I mean, how did they get that topic to, to deal with that we're not aware of?
Excellent question. PRC did a busy airport study last year, of which our airport manager, Ryan, was a part of, thank goodness. And then they came out with a, a document with recommendations. And Renton was one that they recommended, take a look at that, at the Next Gen. Because the airspace is so complicated with Sea-Tac Boeing and Renton, and RAC received last fall a, an updated presentation, first from PRC on their study, and then by the actual grandfather and father who developed the Next Gen.
But that wasn't, okay, so that, but that topic hasn't been in your committee, is that?
Yes, well, I referred it.
The council, we referred it to RAC. This was in two thousand six and seven, this was part of the master plan discussion, we talked about this as a possible option, back then it was, we didn't know where we were going to get the funding, and it was a longer-term deal.
Right.
As Marcy said, PSRC began to look at this, along with the FAA and others, as a way to improve overall traffic congestion in the sky. So it got elevated regionally, which is, which is a good thing for Renton.
Yeah, and our staff has met with FAA and high-up FAA, who reassured us that they will financially support it, ninety percent.
Wow.
Which is huge, including the environmental studies and so on. And we, our airport isn't to current FAA standards. If it was, to make it, this was the big fear, that we were going to have to underground airport weigh and level everything else, and they said, no. They've really developed a trust with our staff and an admiration for Ryan and his staff. So it was a totally different conversation than it has been in the past.
So do you think that, so when you do your presentation, would you do the PSRC part of it or a component of it, or I'm just?
Yeah, it could be a, it would be a smaller version, because obviously at RAC you have the aviation experts who know the questions to ask. But it was fascinating, they showed a short video, and you are the pilot, and you are going in and out of these incredibly mountainous areas. And it just helped, and then they show our airspace, and then down to Renton, and how it would make a difference.
Because I just thought the background might be nice to have everybody.
Exact, that's why I want you all to be comfortable in saying to someone that starts complaining, oh, you're just trying to bring a bunch of jet noise in. No, 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 this is really a good thing for all of you, and it's going to come down, yeah. So I would just like, at some point, to have that.
And then I think the, I just, for the audience and for new council people that don't know the acronym, RAC stands for Renton. Airport Advisory Committee, and going back into history, way back into the year two thousand and two thousand and one, we had some issues with the airport and the neighbors and noise, and we, the council started a, this advisory committee, which has just done wonders, and Marcy's been the big spear header of that for many years. But I remember, I, this, we didn't even let the staff write the report for that, because, a whole bunch of reasons, but it's come a long ways. And the, and the other thing, when we're talking about the airport, when we're doing that, it'd be nice to just have some of an update
Yeah.
on the improvements down there, especially the dredging. I mean, I, I got the opportunity to go down and take a look at it and do some of the dredging. They can tell where every bucket full of dirt came from, all by computer, it is, it was just amazing of what they did.
Well, there's so much happening down there, really nice to get a little bit more of an overview. We only see contracts come back, back and forth, so, you know, I don't, I certainly don't understand totally what's, what's going to happen.
And there's a lot coming up for this year as well as an update, so if it won't all fit on one, you know, maybe next jump, but updates more periodically than just, we don't, we don't get them very often.
No.
Yeah.
Well, and I'm going to suggest that there's times that, until we come up with anything different, that there's times we can have longer committee of the whole meetings, rather than cramming them into an hour. Because it's, this is what I'm hoping to have this year more with the council, is more of the interchange like we, we just had on the RAC. I mean, everybody wants to know what's going on, and if we all get so involved in our little areas that we sometimes forget the breadth of what we do.
Another thing.
Oh, go ahead, she's still up.
Oh, I'm sorry, our annexation policy, now that Fairwood and West Hill have turned down annexation, we're starting to see these little pockets come in. And last year we kind of talked around it, that we needed to revisit it, and I didn't feel like we really did, but we're starting to see these little annexations come in. So maybe that's at the retreat.
That might be a good retreat topic.
Yeah. And then, well, since it came up, maybe an update on the traffic, photo traffic enforcement. Public safety gets it, transportation gets it, but the whole council doesn't really, but we get the emails, and it's certainly an interest to the public. And then, Coulon boat parking, and this is really in the summer on Wednesdays. We have our wonderful Coulon Wednesday evening concerts, we have six of them in the, in the summer. And most of the time, there's a lot of available parking in the boat ramp or boat place, and everything else is filled up. And what I've noticed in the last two summers is that the attendance has really gone down on the concerts. And when I'm, you know, usually we're leaving a neighborhood picnic, and I'm like, oh, you should come down, so-and-so's playing, and people almost always say, oh, we don't even try anymore, there's no parking. And I think that's a shame, we're spending the money, now I know it's sponsored, but just to maybe take a look at that policy, because the police have been directed to ticket if cars go in there. And so then you get this really empty concert, I mean, Cream Tangerine is the most popular, it was, didn't have a really great turnout for the finale, because people just proceed. So, anyway, and that's it.
I, I suggest maybe we have the whole broader topic of Coulon, and what we're going to do with that wonderful park that's getting really, really crowded, would be something extended council meeting. Yeah, because we've got to decide, are we going to try to expand it, and what does that mean, what could we do, do we restrict access, and there's all sorts of options that are really complex.
Good idea.
Yeah. Okay, and those are my options so far.
Okay, Greg.
I was just going to add to the, and this could probably work alongside of, well, it doesn't relate just to the downtown core, but economic development as it points at small business development. And I'm thinking about, you know, there's a, I believe there's some opportunities for our being able to create, you know, some partnerships, to talk about at least, to catalyze some economic development. We're small business, we do great with the large, big, 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 big business development, but I'm speaking of the small business owners that, you know, we, we should be able to create some more ideas, and maybe even getting some input from some community members who have ideas about what that could look like.
I had mentioned this to Jay, just so that it wouldn't go out of my head, when we did the Tri-Park Master Plan, was that two thousand six, two thousand seven? It was all hinged on us getting mitigation from WashDOT, because they were going to go over the well houses and take out house, or, they're not going to do that anymore.
Oh, they're not?
No, they're only going to expand.
That's why we need an update.
Yes, we do. So don't we need to revisit the Tri-Park Master Plan, because now we're not going to have all this slush fund?
For sure. That they're not going to do that?
Well.
Well, not in the first phase of four or five widening, I think even if they, even if they did the hot lane or whatever, it would be one lane each way, as opposed to two lanes each way, and it wouldn't require as much.
Wow.
I asked specifically at WashDOT, are you telling me that you will not be taking out that whole row of Kennydale homes, well, actually on both sides? And they said, no, we will not.
Well, that's because they don't plan on widening it there.
As much.
As much, okay.
Yeah, so doing two lanes are just going to do the one each.
But that by where the park, where the park is, by Lurie Park?
Still, one lane, they wouldn't go over the well houses and take house or out.
They would take a house.
Yeah, I see, I see Greg affirming that's correct, yeah.
We need that.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, only one way each direction.
Okay. So maybe it's time to just revisit that, that's a, a question I hear quite often about, when are you going to improve ball fields, when are you going to expand Aquatic Center?
We've been waiting for them, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's a good one.
Energize Eastside, that's a big project with PSE.
Oh, that's a good one.
Yeah.
Yeah, we really need to.
Because there are people that are seeing that absolutely negative right now.
Well, yeah, especially with the, now they're having community open houses, and we really don't know anything about it, we haven't had, you know, any presentations or anything on it, so.
Or, can you remind me what?
Energize Eastside, it's a new project with PSE running the corridor.
And it would be above ground, right through Kennydale.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, and so they're having public meetings like right now, but we haven't had any, unless it's been some committee, but we haven't had any.
ECP, haven't you? We've had it at Skateboard.
I've had a little bit, but.
A little bit, but you're right.
Until we got, until we got that notice.
I had one, one with Nate Blulie.
Yeah.
But it'd be good to have it in the committee of the whole.
Well, until we got that.
I hope you guys understand that we have about.
Eight months worth of.
Eight or nine months worth of long, I mean, I'm, I'm happy, don't get me wrong, I'm not complaining.
One of the things that I'd like to see early is the, the money's the new development that they're planning for Logan from the Cedar River Bridge to Sixth, early on. So we get some idea of what they're, what they think they're designing and what they're planning, I, I just really hate to see it be all designed and done before we have an idea what, what's going on there. I mean, that's going to be a big.
The thing is, we start the F-line, and then we detour it.
Yeah, I didn't, you know, that's just going to be a big issue, and I think we need, council needs to be able to take a good look at it early on.
I think we've got that schedule the next time we get together.
Do you? Okay.
Twenty-seven.
Okay.
Wow.
So, so my thoughts are, I agree with all these topics, and at the same time, somehow we want to focus enough to make sure we get some stuff done. Because, you know, but it's not to say, I don't, I don't want to necessarily remove any of these, but it's some, in some way, and maybe it's the council offsite, we should, we should pick, you know, one or two things that we really try and drive the city to accomplish, because as, as you know, when we try and accomplish twenty things, we really don't, you know, accomplish anything. Yeah.
Some of these are updates or information, so aortize the ones that we're going to.
Yeah.
And aortize is the word I was going to, because that's one of the things that I think we've talked about, that, that, the retreat that I think will be really important is to, we've talked about looking at the capital improvements that are planned, and, and that probably relates to transportation and some different things within the city, and taking a look at the order that they're in, and maybe, you know, it'll probably involve some more feedback about whether there's funding available and which ones don't have funding, because, you know, for example, Ron Regis Park, which always gets left at the bottom, because you can't get funding for that. Well, you know, maybe, you know, we want to do something different, so, you know, I think that's going to be a big issue when we have a retreat, is to really take a look at some of those and determine their importance. Oh, did I, I'm sorry.
No, no, you, no, I'm glad you brought it up, because you, you hit my hot button, as you well know.
Mine too, yeah. Mine too, yeah.
But first, I'd like to, before I forget, the King County Council and the executive, have they announced it?
They're gonna announce it tomorrow.
Announce tomorrow, transportation, local transportation package, and I'd just like to give it.
It is tomorrow, Greg. I think I saw that.
I'm sure it is tomorrow.
Yeah. So, I was at the PIC, the SCA PIC.
Which is Sound Cities.
I'm also a suburban, Public Issues Commission, a committee. So, I was at the PIC and we were talking about the transportation package that King County is gonna do. And, and Greg can attest to this, we were talking about the split that was negotiated. It's sixty, forty for transit and roads with forty allegedly, I'm editorializing a little bit, going to the cities. However, unincorporated King County also comes out of that forty. So, it's really a little less than sixty, forty for the cities. It's probably closer to the eighty, twenty that they were originally trying to get, but that could be, could be something less than that or more than that. Tomorrow, I should get a document from King County that lists the breakout of how much each city should receive from the transportation package if it goes through. They brought it up at the PIC but said it wasn't ready for public yet because it wasn't finalized. When I get that information, I'll make sure to send it out to the council so that you can see what the amount is, what it looks like Renton should be getting if that transportation package from King County. But without it, there're gonna be metro bus routes that are cut during the, you know, and I honestly, for us, our bus servicing, well, not as bad as some cities.
Oh, no. Mercer Island's fifty percent.
Yeah.
West Seattle, the same, but remember the density, the number of hours.
Yeah.
Would this go to a vote?
Uh, yeah, I think they're gonna take it to a vote immediately.
When?
Um, I assume it will either be August or November.
Doesn't help Metro. They have to start planning in March.
They may do a special, they may do a special election.
Well, they've done the planning, but the outreach, and they are doing outreach, but.
They may do a special election, but we haven't even gotten that far. The city's liaison for Council, Executive Constantine came, yeah. And she hadn't, she wasn't here or there yet on when they were gonna actually hold the election.
So, SCA hasn't taken a position yet?
Next month. We talked about it. We're gonna take it. And then when we do emergent issues, whenever we have that scheduled for, I assume it's probably on the twenty-seventh since it's the last meeting at the end of the month, because that typically when we do it, or regional issues, I'll bring it up and see what you guys wanna do. And I'll take that back.
And I think I'm, the way Jane Hay talked on Friday at ETP at seven-thirty in the morning in Bellevue.
Thank you.
Get my commentary.
Yeah.
It's gonna go to a vote. They're gonna announce it. It's gonna go to a vote. And it's, it entails a sixty-dollar car cap if you're in King County fee for every vehicle.
On top of what we currently pay?
On top of what you currently pay. And then it'll also entail point one, three percent or something. I'm off on the percentage, but it'll bring the King County sales tax to a full ten percent. And for that, if, like I say, sixty percent is gonna go to.
To Metro.
To Metro.
So, let me just ask about the sales tax. So, you're not just talking about unincorporated King County, you're talking about the entire county?
Entire county, exactly.
So, County Council's gonna have to vote to put it to a vote of people, right?
Yes, right.
And do we have any sense, are they unified or?
They're unified.
They're unified.
They are.
They're unified. It will go on the ballot.
I don't think that the County Council is gonna want people complaining about the metro routes that are being cut.
Do they vote prior to November or?
I would be shocked if the County Council didn't, are you talking about the County Council?
Yeah.
I'd be shocked if they didn't have a vote the next month.
Okay. But, but I mean, the vote to put it to the public?
I don't know. And they weren't clear on, and she probably didn't wanna say because none of this stuff was.
Leading target.
Yeah.
The way I got your question again from Jane Hay was that they were gonna announce it tomorrow and then the council, County Council was gonna take it up and pass it almost immediately.
I think the transit, not state, July first, if I, Greg's, are you right? So, I don't know if they're trying to have a vote before then.
I think that's the intention, try to preserve the routes of the case.
So, we, I think by the twenty-seventh of your next meeting, you've got, I think, two topics, transportation topics. We can try to have as much information we can by then and we should probably have at least what's going to pick. You probably have that.
Yeah. And I will say, the rough estimate, I think, was between two-point-three and two-point-five million back to Renton. And that's real rough.
We have RTC, which for the audience is Regional Transit Committee, Metro's Policy Board. We're meeting on Wednesday.
Oh, you'll know.
Yeah. It, there's a topic that's vague. I'm trying to remember. So, they could wrap the news into that agenda item.
Marcy, if you don't mind, I'd like to talk to you after you're done at RTC, just so that we can.
Sure.
I wanna have as much information for the PIC as possible before I go back in there.
Okay.
So, I'd like to talk to you.
Sure. When's your next meeting?
Um, February twelfth, so, yeah.
And then we have Skateboard on Tuesday. Skateboard, no, I don't skateboard. Believe me.
Skateboard stands for South County Area Transportation Board. And ETT stands for East Side Transportation Partnership.
I go to Skateboard and he goes to ETP and we're alternates on him. Yeah. So, we meet on next Tuesday.
I, I just have to show you that he has, Sound Cities has put out a very complete list of acronyms. And so, when I made that comment, cause I just remember having little post-it notes with acronyms on them when I first started on council. However, it doesn't cover the Renton acronyms, but you're way ahead of game with that.
They gave that to us at the first PIC meeting of the year last Wednesday.
Marcy, when did you, or whoever brought this up, when did we think this was going to get approved by that County Council?
Um, they were gonna have the press release.
Dallas is having an announcement tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah.
And it could be next Monday.
It could be, yeah.
So, starting then, we'll have to be very cautious how we discuss it with the council.
Yeah, because what's gonna come is they're gonna come to us and want us to endorse it. And, you know, it's a double-edged sword. We don't wanna see the bus.
No, we've got too many of our residents that rely on that.
Too many of our residents depend on the bus. But yet, on the other side, when you talk to the roadside, we're taking a beating because the county's pulling so much money out of, out of the city that kinda like Sound Transit.
I will say, I feel like the county did a really good job of saying, well, we'll give you so many for your roads, but we'll take some for ourselves and leave you a little less money. So, you want the transit, you know, it's like, well, you want the transit, so take this nominal amount.
So, and as I think, if I remember correctly, so, and at that point, our, our, the things we could do, we could, we could produce factual information for our citizens about how it affects our city. And then we could have a forum, a public forum, where we allow somebody to speak for it and somebody to speak against it. And then we could choose to, you know, endorse or not endorse, but that's about the extent.
That's about what we can do. And I mean, you gotta give them credit for being clever. Because it puts you, puts you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You gotta get people to work. You gotta have a boss.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I don't think we should be paying, our citizens should be paying for a lot of roads. Not in our area, but you gotta, you don't have any choice but to take.
We are about to get that F-line, I guess, right?
Yeah. I mean, we've got, the other side of the story is, is that we, Marcy's the expert on it, on the council. We have fared better than any city has as far as any cuts to Metro. And we're actually getting, what, the F-line is express bus service every fifteen minutes.
Ten to fifteen.
From Burian, no, White Center or Burian?
From Burian through Tequila, the new rebuilt Sounder Station. By FAA to our Transit Center, and then we were able to push them down to the landing. And the one forty is already going down. They added that in since we, they decided, and we agreed to delay it from the fall because of Tequila and Renton's transportation projects, which would have cost it to immediately have been detoured.
So, is the F-line just a working day timing? I mean, during the Monday through Friday?
That will be the bulk of it, but it should be better serviced all the way around.
All the way around, okay.
So, like Randy can walk out of Boeing and know that a bus will be there in ten minutes or less and he can go downtown and have lunch and come back.
Be very nice.
Wow.
Yeah. I mean, I'm hoping it will be, it will be helpful to downtown because the Boeing people can get down there without spending twenty-five minutes walking the mile to their car.
So, it's gonna be back and, so it's gonna be back and forth between those, not just.
It just runs continuously.
Okay.
They have enough buses on it so that there's a fifteen minutes.
So, if you hop on at Boeing, does that mean you have to go to Burian and then go back to the Transit Center?
No, you get off at the Transit Center.
Okay.
Or great, the Grady parking lot.
Okay.
And then you go do your thing and then you go back there and get on and go back to a landing, a Boeing.
Okay. We'll get a, yeah, some more feedback on that and a presentation on how that works.
They're more than happy.
Yeah.
I mean, cause I, I didn't know the route or how that was gonna work.
I think we could just have our staff do it quick.
That would, I think, would be fine.
And I can do it.
Yeah, I mean, that would be fine. I mean, I just heard it was coming and I didn't know the route or the timing or anything. I think that would be valuable to know a little more about.
And when, when does it start? Is it late this year?
It's spring.
Spring of this year.
June, in June.
June of this year.
June of two thousand fourteen, this year.
Fantastic. That's exciting.
The Sounder, the Strander project should be done by then. Sounder won't be totally, but a Tequila project will be done.
Good. That's perfect.
Actually, an update on Strander.
Yeah, and Greg, after twenty years, your Strander project will be done.
Yeah.
Why don't we take a five-minute break and then come back and then we'll talk about the retreat.
Very good.
Get rid of those.
Counselor, and the question that Greg was asked, is the council workshop open to the public? It'll be held at Merrill Gardens and you're more than welcome. And public is always is welcome to any one of those.
Governor, you mentioned January thirteenth. You meant February twenty-sixth?
Yes, I did. I was looking at the date of this. Anyway, what we already have on the agenda for, for the retreat is one percent for the R. Get this one. The council wants earlier input.
Parts installed, yeah.
And I'll discuss this a little bit farther, process and guidelines for prioritizing capital projects. Discussion on physical sustainability. Then our aging workforce, succession planning and sustainability plan, and council administration communications. I wanna go back to capital improvement programs. And there's two things in the city that most likely most important documents that the council will deal with other than the budget in twenty-fourteen as it is in every year. First one is a capital improvement plan. That's where the council will be setting the priority of what we're going to, what we say is the most important projects and put them on a priority. Now, anytime as you say that, you always have to do that with a caveat that sometimes you get a grant you're not aware of coming through. Classic example of that is just happening on a transportation program. We got a lot of good funding for improving Logan Avenue. And we'd figured we were ten or fifteen years out on, on being able to fix Logan Avenue. But because different agencies that are funding see the importance of that, thoroughfare for, for continuing Boeing and keeping Boeing in the Puget Sound, we're in good shape there, so.
And Tequila dropped out.
And Tequila dropped off.
Other project and we were second.
And they weren't ready and we were, so that's another kudos to our staff because they have these projects that they work on and get them ready to go. So, if somebody else loses funding, we're in a position to step forward and say, we're ready, we can get this built, so. But the capital improvement program, as of today, we just kinda list them all and we don't really prioritize them. And so, it's kinda jumbled, whatever happens. I mean, that makes it sound wrong. But we need to, I think, as a council, sit down and say, these are our priorities. To me, the major priority is maintaining what we already have, using our dollars to maintain what we have. And then look at the other, other projects that would be nice. There's a lot of nice, nice projects. And obviously Coulon will be on our, our topic for the retreat.
And Dom, if I may?
Yeah.
Yeah. I remember, a year or two ago, we discussed the same topic, might have been last year, and we talked about criteria. And the, the staff had done a good job of bringing forward some criteria and they identified actually safety as, you know, say first and foremost. And then, like you said, replacing, repairing what we have. But I remember at the time also bringing up, up the other ones, ones that could produce a financial payback for us, such as, I think the mayor's had some concepts about putting, widening some sidewalks on Wells so that restaurants could have outdoor seating. And, you know, like I'd kinda like to see that make it to the top of his list cause that'll bring up revenues at those restaurants, which'll give us a stream back to replenish that.
I think that's a city's thing as well.
Okay, yes, yeah. So, so anyways, I think I'm gonna welcome that topic and maybe we can even get into, you know, talking more than just criteria. This year, maybe talking some specific project. Again, with the understanding that we, we can set those priorities and then if a grant comes in that perfectly aligns with one that's a lower priority, I mean, I'd want the staff to leap on it and go.
The other thing is with the capital improvement, a lot of times those things have been on for years and are just working their way up.
Yeah.
And so, they may not be, like you said, there may be new things that would be at a higher priority than adding, you know, those down at the, at the end.
Yeah.
I think that would be real valuable.
Yeah. So, before, before, a week, hopefully a week or so before, we all have a copy of the capital improvement program, but hopefully we can dig them out or get Julie to help us find them and dig, dig that out.
Take note of it.
And Ewan will be getting us the criteria for prioritization that we need to discuss and, and say, this is what we're, as a whole council, is what we're going to do. Cause that's gonna lead us into the future. It really, it really is. I mean.
The other part of that, I don't know exactly how we would get that information. And maybe it's at the retreat, is that I'm sure staff also knows what items are on that list, maybe that they have just set in grants or, or are in a niche where, you know, grants are being given right now. And, and so that would help, you know, that information would help prioritize some of them too.
Next, on the twenty-seventh, actually, to sort of go along with what Captain Ryer just said, in our transportation, within the transportation six-year plan, we, we've identified some grant possibilities. And so, one of the things we wanna do in two weeks is go over those with you to get confirmation from you that we're, we either continue to pursue or is this the right priority, whatever else is. As Ben said, sometimes those priorities get chosen for us depending on the project and how busy the criteria. But we, we do wanna make sure that you agree that we oughta continue on. It looks like we've got some possibilities for some, another good year of projects. But we'll, I think, if, I'm hearing that's what you wanna make sure that you get to do as council is before we get too far down the road that you have a weigh-in on whether we should even pursue or not.
And then the other part of that, you know, we have the capital improvement program. And for those that, that's the CIP, that's anything basically to do with our parks, our buildings, but it doesn't have anything to do with roads. Then we have the. buildings, but it doesn't have anything to do with roads. Then, we have the TIP, which is a traffic improvement program.